I would like to call the school board meeting for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, for the Des Moines Public Schools to order. Ms. Rios, could you please take the roll?
Yes, Ms. Alonso Diaz?
Here.
Ms. Caldwell Johnson? Ms. Campos?
Here.
Mr. Dix?
Here.
Ms. Knox?
Here.
Ms. Martorano?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here. If we could just check one more time, is Ms. Caldwell Johnson on?
I believe she's having a hard time getting in. I'm gonna send her the link.
Thank you. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Martorano so moved.
Alonso, second.
We have a motion by Martorano and a second by Ms. Alonso Diaz. Board members, please cast your votes. Mr. Dix, how do you vote? The vote is six, zero. Approved. Dr. Roberts, the next item on our agenda is district recognitions, and we are all very excited about this. So will you please present?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As we continue to bring forth district celebrations to the board and community, celebrating the successes and accomplishments, both in and out of the classroom, so much that is happening and executed by our outstanding students and certainly our amazing teachers, staff, and leaders. I'm pleased to share this evening's recognitions, one that I'm excited about. While I've enjoyed every single day as superintendent, haven't been here now for five months and five days, I'm not counting. Yesterday was one of those days that I've loved so much and loved even a little bit more. After all, what better way to start the week than to start with a Monday morning pep rally? And this was not just another pep rally. It was a pep rally and a gathering to share some really exciting news. Ann Minks, an ELL teacher at Hoover High School, was named as the 2024 Iowa State Teacher of the Year. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a monumental accomplishment. And to put it in perspective, Ann was selected from more than 38,000 teachers in a little over 1,310 schools and 328 school districts. That is huge. Not only was she selected by her peers, but she was presented by the Director of Education, Mackenzie Snow, and had a proclamation written by Governor Kim Reynolds. We're also proud and excited for you, Ann. It is clear that the work you've done will continue to leave an indelible mark on the lives of the students with whom you've interacted. You know, I watched you yesterday interact with students outside of the classroom setting. It was so, I had so much joy watching you sit in the governor's office with your students who just uplifted all of the interactions with you and about you with so much pride. And to listen to them talk about their aspirations, many of which they've attributed to you. We've heard students talk about wanting to become medical doctors and dentists and engineers. And equally as important is the fact that the students who were there were newcomers from Afghanistan, Tanzania, the Congo, and many other places. You truly have represented us very well, and we are proud of you. Of course, we know that you are also in the running to become the National Teacher of the Year, and we are here, more than 36,000 strong, looting for you. And we're not going to keep you too long because I believe that you need to hop off of this meeting very shortly so that you can get on a call to understand what lies ahead. It's going to be a little busyness ahead for you, but we know that you're made for this. Ann, congratulations. We know that you and your amazing principal would like to come forward to the podium to share a little bit about this accomplishment. Thank you, Quinn.
Good evening. My name is Quinn Kelly, and I'm the principal of Hoover High School. This is my second year there. So a very exciting thing to happen so early in my time at Hoover. I have the absolute pleasure tonight of introducing this year's 2024 Iowa Teacher of the Year and Hoover High School English Language Learning Teacher, Ann Minks. Ann has been in the field of education for 15 years and teaching English learners at Hoover High School since 2014. Her passion for the science of reading and helping English language learners progress in their English proficiency are what makes her an absolute standout. Every school year but one since 2018, Hoover High School English Language Learners have outpaced the state average in progressing towards English language proficiency. Last year, they demonstrated the highest growth of any other high school in the state of Iowa. I have said it many times, but I will say it again. If you are an English language learner in the state of Iowa, you want to be at Hoover High School. Under the leadership of Ann and her ELL team, Hoover is where multilingual students learn English and to read in English the fastest and with the highest proficiency. Ann's students rave about her and her classroom, many stating that she is their favorite teacher. When you ask them what they like most about her, it is her dedication towards their development of academic skills and English proficiency. They know that under her guidance, they are on their way to making their dreams in Des Moines and in this country a reality. Members of the school board, Superintendent Roberts, and guests, please give a warm welcome.
Thank you all so much. Members of the board, it's good to be here tonight. It's so exciting. I just want to say thank you to Dr. Roberts again for everything yesterday and for his leadership of this district. We very much have needed some radical empathy, and we so appreciate to have a strong leader here with us. Again, thank you to Quinn, our principal at Hoover. She's done so much and worked so hard to integrate communities and schools in Hoover, and she's really working to turn Hoover into the thriving Northwest side. So again, thank you to Quinn and all of her leadership. Again, I cannot keep saying I'm so truly humbled to be here as the 2024 Iowa Teacher of the Year. I have worked with so many amazing educators and students throughout Des Moines Public Schools, and I'm truly proud to be a Des Moines Public School employee. I can't say that enough. I'm so excited to represent Des Moines throughout the state and students during the next year. I would like to say something tonight, just a general message, that we know that education is not perfect, right? Nothing run by humans ever is, and we continue to show up and do the work anyway, right? We hope that our students will carry on. And I often looked at educational leaderships for inspiration, and one of those people that strikes a chord for me is known as Americans Government Teacher. Her name is Sharon McMahon, and she has this quote that says, "To too many people, hope is a dirty word. To too many people, hope is an emotion. To too many people, hope is a synonym for optimism. The truth is, hope is a practice. Hope is a choice. Hope is cultivated. It is exercised. Hope is developed. Hope is not a feeling. The light is there if you have the courage to look. Changing the world begins with looking for the light. It begins with choosing hope." In the upcoming year, I know that staff and students at DMPS will continue to cultivate a place of hope. I will also serve as an ambassador of education who chooses hope. I will proudly serve as a representative of all teachers of Iowa, and I look forward to working with educators in DMPS and across the state to support English language learners and improve literacy practices for all students. I'm truly excited to begin this journey and appreciate your support so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Quinn. Madam Chair, I conclude this evening's district recognitions.
This most humbling was that she had to go back to the classroom the next day and actually just go back to work. So, thank you so much. We're going to turn to the public forum now, next on the agenda, and then followed by consent and regular agenda. We provide speakers at the forum an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the board agenda. We also allow any person the opportunity to speak to the board for up to five minutes following the presentation of an agenda item. If anyone wishes to speak during any portion of the business meeting, please email rosa.rios@dmschools.org. The same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. Speakers will be called individually, and we ask they state their name and address prior to providing comments. Students and minors do not have to provide their addresses. Guests of the board are encouraged to speak to matters relating to the programs, services, and operations of DMPS. Please remember that Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or character attacks as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. The use of inappropriate language will not be tolerated, and individuals choosing to do so will be gavelled out of order and asked to excuse themselves from the premises or escorted out by district security. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in a discussion with public forum speakers as it is our obligation to discuss only matters posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency and opportunity afforded to all community stakeholders. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or board follow-up at the time after the meeting. Thanks for your participation. We appreciate your feedback and input. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers for the public forum?
Yes, we do. First up, I'll call David McCudden.
David McCudden, 410 North Hickory Boulevard, Pleasant Hill, Iowa. I've been speaking at these meetings since April of this year. This will be my fourth attempt to get to do something about the math curriculum at Brubaker Elementary. A couple of weeks ago, I finally got a visit from Jackie Norris and a curriculum staff member. They spent about 15 minutes in two different classrooms. They didn't speak to any teachers about the curriculum. They had a meeting in the principal's office afterwards. They let me attend. The first thing the curriculum staff member said was that she didn't see anyone struggling with addition or subtraction. I knew then that nothing was going to come of the visit. I tried to show them some examples of the students' addition and subtraction skills. The curriculum staff member said that the worksheets weren't part of the curriculum and that they were probably confusing the students. If she had looked at the worksheets, she would have seen that they were merely more examples of addition and subtraction. Part of the problem with the curriculum is they don't spend enough time on addition or subtraction and not enough problems to become proficient at what they're doing. Delaware Elementary is just a mile away from Brubaker with a similar demographic. They have, Delaware Elementary is in the southeast Polk School District. Their math proficiency is 84%. Brubaker's is 40%. It's a shame that our teachers aren't heard by this board. Dr. Roberts, you have a chance to turn this around. You didn't get the Des Moines Public School system into the predicament they're in. This performance has been going on for a long time. It's not just this year. I think if you really listen to the teachers and encourage them to speak up and actually implement some of the ideas that they come up with, I think you would be amazed at how much improvement there would be at Brubaker. When people are engaged, it's just amazing how things change and how involved they get in the process. After Jackie's visit to Brubaker, I was ready to give up and find something else to do with my time. I even told the Brubaker staff that I was done and wouldn't be back. Before I got to my truck, I changed my mind. These children have been let down by too many people already. I sent Jackie an email afterwards saying I was disappointed in her visit and that she didn't speak to any of the teachers about the curriculum. Jackie replied, "That is important to support the staff and their recommendations, especially since they are research-based."
Thirty seconds remaining.
Okay. I sent her an email asking if she considered the teachers at Brubaker staff members. She didn't reply. I don't like speaking at these meetings. It makes me uncomfortable, if you can't tell. But I'm not going to quit until something changes and our children are performing at better than a 40% rate. And I'll be happy to take any feedback after this meeting that anybody wants to give me.
Thank you. Next up, I'll call Rebecca Marks.
Rebecca Marks, 1225 42nd Street. I have been a sign language interpreter for the district for the last 10 years. Prior to that, I had 14 years of experience working in an inner-city school in K-12. I moved here to be closer to my family. I am here this evening to employ you to take a closer look at the budget for our next school year and ask you to prioritize attracting and retaining quality education professionals. In my deaf education department, I have seen a large percentage of staff leave this district for other opportunities in surrounding districts, including teachers, SLPs, audiologists, interpreters, and associates. In the last several years, we have lost more than a third of our staff to the greener grasses of other districts. We need to stop the bleed. There are very few higher education opportunities that prepare education professionals to work with students who are deaf and hard of hearing. We have had open positions for deaf education teachers for the last several years go unfilled. We also have several interpreter positions that could not be filled. This fall, I had a student who requested and was granted to no longer have interpreting services. When asked why, their response was that other students need it more than they did because they saw the need and it wasn't being fulfilled. They were primarily supported by substitute interpreters because we couldn't attract anyone to hire. For the record, this student definitely did need it. But she was willing to sacrifice her education for the benefit of the students that she saw might need more. The students that we serve in this district, no surprise to you, have greater needs than those in other surrounding districts. We have a higher percentage of students with high A scores or experiencing food scarcity and have to fend for themselves. This makes our jobs not only more challenging, but also a calling. We want to make sure that these students have what they need to be successful in the future. But we cannot put the needs of our students above those of our own families. When looking at the numbers, I and nearly every other professional in my building can make a better living financially going to another district. Most education support professionals that I work with could make a better living working at McDonald's. This is a problem. We have to incentivize staff to stay and recruit others to join. The quality of education we provide primarily depends on our ability to do so. Please prioritize attracting and retaining quality education professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is Christina Tharp.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Roberts. I'm Christina Tharp, 2804 East 39th Court, Des Moines, a DMPS social studies teacher for 13 years. I come before you this evening to provide some numbers to give some context to the speakers you've heard and emails you're receiving related to educator salary. I want to take you through two scenarios. For the first scenario, let's suppose that you are a recent graduate looking to find your first teaching job. The first place you look, of course, is Des Moines Public Schools. You find out that your starting salary would be $45,392, and you have no cost for health insurance. You also look at teaching openings in the surrounding areas. You see that West Des Moines will pay you $48,451. Johnston will pay you $49,063. Waukees pays $52,368. You check out Ankeny and see a salary of $52,640. And Urbandale will pay you a salary of $52,763. These districts all provide zero cost, single insurance, and an average of $500 per month for family insurance. For the second scenario, let's go back to 1993. There, you are a new teacher that chose to become a DMPS career teacher. You, who chose DMPS in 1993, earned a salary of $19,500 with zero cost for health insurance. The surrounding districts, Ankeny, Urbandale, West Des Moines, Johnston, and Waukees, all paid near this $19,500 state minimum salary, and health insurance was all no-pay with similar plan designs. Now, fast forward to today. How are you, the teacher who chose DMPS in 1993, doing financially compared to if you had chosen a different district? Let's compare you to a 30-year teacher with a master's plus 30 hours in other metro districts. Remember that these other districts must deal with the same legislature, governor, education policies, inadequate school budgets, fluctuations in enrollments, and similar issues that are faced by Des Moines Public Schools. As a teacher with a master's plus 30 hours and 30 years of service in DMPS, you are in a salary of $78,284. Waukees will pay you $86,318. In Johnston, you would be earning an $88,868 salary. The salary in Urbandale pays $90,969. If you had chosen West Des Moines, your salary would be $92,346. And a teacher with your same credentials earns a salary of $96,969 in Ankeny. Why does looking at the 30-year salary matter? One of the most important benefits for teachers is their IFRS. IFRS calculate your retirement payment based on your best five years of salary. Your highest salary years matter a lot. Two questions that I hope you'll consider moving forward. Would you come here to DMPS to work, given these options? And if you were here, would you stay here, given these options? Thank you.
Those are all the speakers I have for tonight.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Rios. We will now move to the consent agenda. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in discussion or deliberation with a speaker regarding comments made to agenda items. Discussion and deliberation will remain among board members at the board table with speaker's comments informing the board's discussion, deliberation, and determinations as deemed necessary. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers?
We do not have any speakers for the consent agenda.
Thank you. Ms. Alonso Diaz, I believe you have the consent motion.
How do you do? I move that the board approve the consent items in accordance with the recommended action for each item on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the board secretary in the amount of $5,776,318.75.
Is there a second?
Martorano, second.
We have a motion by Alonso Diaz and a second by Martorano. Any discussion, or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes. Mr. Dix?
Mr. Dix, yes.
And Ms. Caldwell Johnson?
Yes.
The consent agenda items are approved, seven to zero. Next on the agenda is the public hearing. We have item E1, hearing for Pro DMOY near Hyatt Middle School. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to item E1? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. Approve conveying property and temporary easement for construction and construction-related activities near Hyatt Middle School, property address of 1427 East University Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa, 50316.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item E1?
Martorano so moved. Campos, second.
We have a motion by Martorano and a second by Campos. Any other discussion, or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes. Mr. Dix?
Mr. Dix, yes.
Ms. Caldwell Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. First item is F1, request to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, for modified allowable growth for projected costs due to increased limited English proficient program expenditures with increased students beyond five years. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board approve the request to the School Board Review Committee for modified allowable growth in the amount of $3,829,329.35 for fiscal year 2023-2024 for projected costs due to increased limited English proficient LEP program expenditures with increased students beyond five years.
May I have a motion and a second to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
Alonso so moved.
Knox, second.
We have a motion by Alonso and a second by Knox. Are there any discussions, or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes. Mr. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next item is F2, request to the School Budget Review Committee for modified allowable growth for projected costs due to increased open enrollment out. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board approve the request to the School Board Review Committee for modified allowable growth in the amount of $4,165,148 for fiscal year 2023-24 for projected costs due to increased open enrollment out.
May I have a motion and a second to accept the superintendent's recommendation? We have a motion by Caldwell Johnson and a second by Martorano. Are there any discussion, or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes. Mr. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next item is F3, request to the School Budget Review Committee for modified allowable growth for projected costs due to increased enrollment. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board approve the request to the School Board Review Committee for modified allowable growth in the amount of $213,937 for the fiscal year 2023-24 for projected costs due to increased enrollment.
Approved, seven to zero. The next item is F4, personnel recommendation. Receive, file, and action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board receive and accept my recommendation that a teaching contract be terminated effective immediately for the reasons that are set forth in the superintendent's notice.
May I have a motion and a second to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
Martorano so moved.
We have a motion by Martorano and a second by Ms. Caldwell Johnson. Any discussion, or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes. Mr. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next, we have our information-only items. First item is G1, stadium update, Delta Dental sponsorship.
We do not at this time.
Okay. Second item is G2, IASB District Director V election. Next, we'll move to items of privilege. I would like to ask if our board members would like to share anything. I would like to ask if our board members would like to share anything.
I was present yesterday to Hoover High School for the Teacher of the Year ceremony. And as a mother of kids that were in ELL and family, I'm just so happy that one of our teachers got that award. It was crazy because on Facebook, I have a lot of friends and family that were students of hers, and I could tell the passion that she gives to the students that she helps.
Thank you. The board members? Madam Chair? Go ahead, Ms. Caldwell-Johnson.
Yes, I just wanted to apologize to my board colleagues for my virtual attendance this evening. I've not been well today, and I just felt like, as opposed to disrupting the meeting and needing to be more out than in, that I would join virtually. So thank you for your indulgence. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Alonso?
I, you know, this week, I've been really excited. I've been really tired, but I've been really excited about the work that the board is doing with community engagement. It's just exciting to see. I'm excited to see the outcome. That's all.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you to our teachers and staff who have, show up every day for our students, and thank you for showing up at these meetings. As the daughter of a Des Moines Public Schools teacher, I know how hard you all work every day. Thank you for all you do for my student, for my kids that are your students and for our entire community. And I just wanted to say you're seen and you're heard, and you're very much appreciated. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Knox. I'll make one last welcome to our new board members and ask everybody's patience as we are moving deck chairs and welcoming new board members. So Rosie has full permission. If we make a mistake, she's going to nudge us and get us on the right track. But just really excited about all of us working together. And again, want to welcome Ms. Campos and Mr. Dix. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Roberts for his report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My report this evening is brief. Certainly, I'm sitting here in a place where I feel professionally conflicted, but still inspired. You know, we started a week off with an amazing celebration, the highest honor that any teacher can have bestowed upon them, Iowa Teacher of the Year. And what I'm also fully aware of, and I've shared this on many occasions, the district's leadership team and I have visited, as of today, close to seven hundred classrooms since the year started. And each of those classrooms, we have seen some of the most dedicated, committed, talented, and highly impactful teachers, providing outstanding pedagogical strategies to all of our students. You know, since I was a teacher not so long ago, about twenty-three years, we have had ongoing conversations and discussions about how much do we value teachers? And can we demonstrate that value by looking at how we compensate them during an ongoing time of undulated inflationary environments? Teachers, I have received a number of written communications from many of you. I've had lots of conversations with the union leadership, individuals who clearly believe in your work the way we do, and they are relentless advocates on your behalf. I know that the board and I are committed to prioritizing what is best for our teachers. We will continue to have conversations about what is possible. And while I know that negotiations lay upon us soon, and I cannot sit here and make any commitments, I don't want to continue to say how much we value you, how much we see you and hear you, without being able to do something about it. I know for a fact that having had conversations with board members, they want to have these conversations, and we will. But I want to urge you to continue to be the outstanding professionals that you are. For that, I say thank you. The numbers you've shared and the conversations you've had with us thus far will continue to inspire us to think about what's next and what's possible. The dedication we have seen over the last several years and certainly in these first five months of this school year bodes well for what is to come for our students, for the city of Des Moines, and for Des Moines Public Schools. Thank you for your continued dedication and service, and we hear your voice of advocacy. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Thank you for joining us this evening. We greatly appreciate you all at this meeting, and it is adjourned at six oh eight. We will have a brief five-minute bio break, and we will move quickly into our work session. The first work session will be on community engagement and outreach, and the second will be discussing board participation in committee committees in Des Moines Public Schools. Quick break? Patrick and Terry, are you both still on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is Rodney, Rodney, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. All right. We have everybody. So. All right, somebody needs to teach me. Do we have to do something specific to kick off a work session? Are we good to go? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Terry. Okay, so are, we have two work sessions. Hopefully, we will speedily go through both. I anticipate the first one will probably take thirty to forty-five minutes, depending upon feedback that people have. The agenda that we have, I think, that I'd like to outline, is kind of four areas. One is just a recap of where we are and where we're going. The second is specifically to talk about the scheduling process. We're going to hear from Rodney and Maria on the script. We're going to hear from Maria, and she's going to name the committee and talk about the listening sessions. And then we're going to wrap up with next steps. So I think that's the goal of our time together. Just to recap the phases, and this is, this is, again, my words, so please feel free to take them apart. But I think the first phase of our outreach was doing the things that we know are critical to do. So that means showing up in each of the districts and hosting a listening session and ensuring that we hear from our DMPS teachers and staff. We know that those are critical building blocks that have to take place. We've moved forward to start the setup of those, and we'll come back to that in a minute. The second piece, which I think we all would say is incredibly important, is the piece that Maria is going to talk about, which is the outreach based on the feedback that was submitted by all of you in terms of where we really want to make sure we're showing up, we're digging in, and we're getting feedback from different aspects of the community. The third phase, should we need it, is after January. If we, after January second, if we look at the inputs that we've got to date and we feel like it's still not representative of the population that we serve and the voices that we want to hear, there is an opportunity to use a third-party recruiter to recruit DMPS families to the conversation. Board members will still leave it. But I think that's the if we need it. That would be phase three. So does everybody, are we kind of clear on the general approaches that we're taking to move forward and engage? Okay, great. Thank you. So with that, I'm going to give just a couple of updates, and then we're going to turn it over to Rodney and Maria. We have moved forward with a website. And special thanks to Phil. I know he's not here. Maria or Kyle, I'm not sure if you're able to show it. But with a landing page, it basically has the information about the listening sessions. It links back to board goals and guardrails. It explains what goals and guardrails are. It lists the current ones. I think this is the test form, Rosie. I don't know if you have the landing site itself.
No.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. So, and really, it's just, imagine the superintendent search. It's the same concept. So I think this is the main board. I think Phil hasn't linked it to the full. Anyways, so we have a landing page. This is where we're going to post where the meetings are, when the meetings are. This is where we'll post what the summary of the themes were, what the data was from the survey. This will be public and available to the public, so they can see the process as we go through it. And we will launch that ideally in the next couple of days in partnership with Phil announcing the, announcing the listening sessions that we've got set up so far. The second thing is, in partnership with Dr. Roberts, I have a first conversation with Josie, who is going to be helping put the survey up and hosting the survey for DMPS and pushing that out to all of the families. That's really dependent on the content that will come as a result of the, as a result of the script. So that piece is moving forward as well. The only other thing in terms of logistics is, and we can do this at the end, we used the doodle poll and got enough information to figure out how to schedule four listening sessions and some of the teacher listening sessions. The mistake that I made, and I'll take ownership for this, is a couple of dates don't work. So for instance, Terry doesn't work for the event in her district, and Anna doesn't work for the event in her district. So Rosie and I will have a conversation about that and talk to you because we obviously want you to be able to participate in a listening session in your district. I just, we miss that.
I think that in the past, we've thought about specifically going out to districts that are not our own to hear from individuals that we don't normally hear from. So I think it would be, I feel it's okay if we are out in neighborhoods and populations that we don't normally hear from. I don't know how others feel about that.
Is that a stated?
I think that was one of the under SOFG best practices, is to go out to not your district's.
Perfect.
And I think that's more in a, like, so you're not going to talk to your voters.
Yep. Great feedback. So at the end, what I think we'll do is we'll just wrap up. We'll pull up the calendar of what we've got scheduled. And if everybody could just put their eyes on it, there's only six, I think, that are on there, six or seven. So I think we can tackle it together. But before, let's just do it now, actually. Let's just get it out of the way. Can you, are you able to pull it up, Rosie? Hey, Rodney, are you able to pull it up?
I believe that you're referring to the spreadsheet?
It's, it's on the same spreadsheet that you and Maria are going to be presenting from.
Right. The official schedule is the tab you're referring to? Yes.
Are we able to see it?
Yeah.
Okay. I think he is.
Oh, are you asking me to share?
We are. Sorry, Rodney.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
This is, this is the rookie here, trying to figure out how it all works together.
Yeah, let me check all the. Yeah, let me check all these windows that I have.
Oh, hi. Hi, everybody. We can see faces.
I don't see where I'm able to share.
Up top next to your microphone, Rodney?
Yep, no, click with that. I think.
Give you a choice about what you want to share.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm.
Rosie, are you able to share? No, we're actually, we need to pull up the document anyways for, it's got, it's the full document that has the work that everybody input. It's the, it's just an additional tab there, so I think we'll need it anyways, so we might as well take a moment to pull that up, since I think Maria and Rodney are going to be referring to it.
So I wasn't able to get access to the Google document. I requested access to that, so either you can grant me that access.
I think Rodney has to grant the access.
Or Rosie gives Rodney present, presenter, or presenter rights or something.
Hey Rodney, did you get a request from Kyle?
It would say DMPTV.
DMPTV 1? What's going on? Rodney, are you there?
Rodney?
Teri, are you there?
Patrick?
I am.
Oh, okay. Okay, there's Rodney.
There they are, okay.
I think Rodney might be frozen.
He's frozen. Or he's really good at sitting still.
Hey Patrick, can you pull it up? That's a great idea, Kim.
Yes. This is what you sent, Jackie.
No, this would have been the Google Doc that Rodney shared. Rodney and Maria shared, I should say, it came from Maria.
It's the document that we use to input our suggestions.
I'm looking.
Okay, Rosie's looking too, so we'll see who gets there first. And Rodney, did we get you back yet? Maybe I'll just text him.
Yeah, I think I need access to.
Okay. Well, we kind of need Rodney for the next several parts, so why don't I just text him and see? I think while we're waiting for Rodney, everybody has a copy of the script. It was sent to people ahead of time. Maria, is there anything you want to say about the script?
That it's pretty much ready, that we're ready to go, that we just need input from everyone, want to make sure that people are able to just take a good look at it and feel comfortable with it. But I think it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's complete.
I know that, and I'm not sure if Rodney was planning on doing this, we did a teeny bit of prep work, Maria, when we got ready, ready for the last community, the, the board superintendent sessions, we talked a little bit about effective listening, and will you share that with the group, or will Rodney be taking us through that?
I think Rodney was planning on doing it. Because we have two new people on the board, we want to make sure that facilitating, we have to have two people for each session, we need to have someone facilitate and then a scribe. So whoever's facilitating has to feel comfortable with, with the script. I mean, we all have to, because we're going to have to facilitate at some point.
Kim, how do you feel about taking the ball and running with it, and maybe just sharing a few insights while we're waiting for Rodney on script? And just how to think about. Oh, there he is.
He's back.
Hey Rodney?
Yes.
Hi, welcome back. We, we can go in a couple of different directions. Do you, several people are comfortable pulling up the document, but they seem to need access from you. Are you able to give access to either rosa.rios or DMPS1? So they can pull up the documents? Kyle, or Kyle? Did we lose him again?
I'm here, I'm here. Give me a second, I'm going to send, it's like 14.
Yep, so while they're figuring that out, Kim, do you mind, let's just talk a little bit about the script, maybe just give a little bit of context, and I think some of the big takeaways as we think about the effective way to facilitate meetings, these particular meetings.
Forgive me, I've not had a chance to, to go through this in its entirety, but I can speak to kind of the overall, kind of overarching what we want to. First, we want to show gratitude for participation and really encourage everyone to speak freely. And I would say, next, an approach that we generally use that's important is to respond back, and maybe we can do a little bit of role-playing. When we ask the question, you will want to respond back what you're hearing, and responding back in the exact words that were given, so it's important not to interpret or give your interpretation of what an individual has given as an answer, but in an effort for, to ensure that we are hearing exactly what the participants are, are saying or their answer is, responding back the exact verbiage. So Jenna, would you role-play with me?
Yes.
So. Thank you, we wanted to also thank people for being the first to share as well. Let's see, let's talk about what our students should know and be able to do in middle school. A lot of things middle school students should know and be able to do, but if you could just pick one or two of the most important things that they need to know or be able to do, what would those be?
Middle school students need to know how to be organized.
Middle school students know how to be organized. Thank you for being the first to share, Ms. Knox, I appreciate you sharing. Middle school students need to know how to be organized. So, and see, no. It gives the opportunity.
But not say, you shouldn't, what you shouldn't say back is, oh, so you think middle school students should... I'm trying to come up with another way to say it.
Or I totally agree.
Oh, yeah, completely agree. Yeah, you wouldn't, don't want to give inflection or agreement or disagreement on their response. You don't want to say great answer, you don't want to say, ooh, I, I completely agree. You just want to reflect back what they've said. It gives the scribe, so if, if Maria was my scribe in that, it would give her the opportunity to type in exactly what was said as I'm responding to it and making sure that I heard the individual correctly. So really asking them, did I hear that correctly? And if I didn't, they have an opportunity to clarify. We get that clarification, and if it's correct, they respond with yes, and we move on to the next person. Always sharing gratitude at their willingness to be a participant and the first to share, and really creating a safe space.
Great, Kim. Yeah, actually, Patrick, if it's okay, now that we've got Rodney back online, I do want to give him just a quick update. So Rodney, we just, as we were trying to figure out technology, I put him on the spot and just asked her to give a little bit of an explanation around how we should think about facilitating, and I hope you heard that. And that's as much as we've covered with regards to the script. Everybody has a copy. And so with that, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna turn it to you, but also note that Patrick has a, a quick question.
Right, a quick question.
Patrick?
Sorry about that, I lost you for just a second. I, can you hear now?
Yes.
So, just having never done this before, my, like, just first impression, and, and so I need some education on this. My first impression is that this style might put people off in that it is not how humans normally interact. And so while I understand the need for not showing emotion or agreement or like, all that makes sense to me, is there, I just want to understand, is it appropriate response? So I hear you saying, and then exactly what they say back at an end, not I agree, or can we say something like that, or is that too far out of bounds?
Yes, and I'm not saying you need to be a robot or suggesting kind of robotics, but exactly what you just said, so what I hear you saying is, and then responding back would be absolutely appropriate.
That helps, that helps, sorry about that. That's just, I just, just having never done it, I don't know if it's, if it's the best practice to be a little bit more strict about that.
So we have to.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have to be able to stay just neutral.
Sure.
Repeat what information they've provided. Acknowledge that you heard it. Thank them. And then ask for any clarification to make sure that we understood the question correctly. Is that what you said, Kim?
So in your response, Ms. Knox, I heard you say this, middle school students need to be organized. Did I hear you correctly? And then if, if Ms. Knox agrees with what I said, we can move on, but if, if I did not repeat it back, because we know, she gave a very concise answer, right? And oftentimes, we don't receive very concise answers. So it's not an easy job to be able to reflect back what's being said to you, particularly when there's a, a long narrative to go with it. So there are times when, if I reflect back what an individual has said, I've, I could have not gotten it right. So in that time, and you want to make sure that the participant is in fact feeling heard and that I've responded back properly, and if not, then they can clarify.
And Kim, is it okay in that long narrative scenario that you laid out, to summarize as best we can, I, I mean, obviously, we're not going to be able to word-for-word and say what they, they're saying, so obviously, we just have to summarize as best we can in one or two sentences what they were, the point they were trying to get across.
Yeah, so I think it's really important if you're going to summarize, and Rodney, jump in and, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but if, if you are in fact going to not repeat it back exactly, make sure that you're getting at the core value that they're speaking to in that response. And I, I will say, I have like a notepad that when I am facilitating this conversation, I kind of jot down things just to make sure that I get it right. But that, what would you say, Rodney?
No, I, I agree with you 100%. I guess the, the main point is you all are there to, to listen. So you're out there engaging the community, you are asking the questions, you are repeating to make sure that you are hearing correctly what has been said and that the other person can scribe it correctly. But you're not there to offer opinions or to make facial expressions because in this process, you're there to correct and hear what the community has to say to you. And, and so that's why it's important that you repeat what you, what you heard and, and document it as well.
For my board colleagues that, we went through this with the superintendent search, I guess one thing that just dawned on me is when we did these listening sessions, we were asking for one word at that time, remember? And so we, there were these long answers, but then it, we kind of were able, like, okay, so the one word would be, and that's not the same layout here, so I think we just have to be a little more prepared to, be ready to boil it down to the point as well, and trying to keep it as concise, so, and just reflecting back. Great.
So, so allow me to catch up if I can just for a minute. So on, on board docs, you all have a copy of the script, everybody has that in front of them.
Yes.
And so, and so there's two documents there. One is a listening announcement, so that if two board members are out at a meeting hosted by the community, and you don't have time to do a full session, you can still go and share with the community what it is that the board is doing. So in this script that you have, everything that's highlighted in yellow is what you're supposed to say. And those are the spoken parts. And then the parts that are, the rest of the script are notes and context for whoever is leading the session. So why I just want to make sure that, before we go back to the, to the full script, is everybody clear on that, have volume on that, have an opportunity to review this and have anything to, to share as far as the outreach listening announcement script? Anyone have anything they'd like to share?
Hey Rodney, this is Teri.
Yes, yes.
And I was just going to offer that, I think it is really clear, really succinct, and I think the less talking we do on the front end, the better the feedback will be from the group. So I think the setup that you've outlined, it's appropriate, and I'm, I'm comfortable with the script the way it's written.
Okay, thank you for sharing that. One of the things you all will hear from me is important that all the board members are engaged and supportive, so if there's anyone that has any unreadiness, can you speak now or hold your peace before we move on?
I think the only concern that I want to elevate is that 90-minute meetings are the ideal, but some of the meetings are not able to be 90 minutes. And so are we comfortable looking at this and saying this is a 60 to 90-minute script? It just, if we have a smaller group.
Yeah, I'm going to get to that portion next, right now, I just want to make sure that there's agreement on the listening session announcement. Okay, with that, now we can proceed on where it says outreach and engagement, listening session. I would appreciate it if someone be willing to share and read the section that's under preparation, because I think preparation is important, and I want to make sure that everyone is comfortable with the preparation or have any input in terms of what we, what you're being asked to do as far as preparing for the sessions. Somebody like to share?
One day prior to the session, confirm with the session's host that they have everything they need and that the session is still proceeding as planned. In the case of outreach, outreach sessions, this person will likely be the organization's leader. In the case of engagement sessions, this person will likely be the superintendent or his designee. For virtual sessions, do a test run with the host to ensure the technology works and find out the key sequence your computer uses to take screenshots. For all sessions, trade email and mobile numbers with the session host in case of emergencies. For all sessions, ask the host if it is appropriate to take screenshots, photos during the session so that there is documentation of the board's engagement with their group. Every time the board says it will do something and it doesn't happen, regardless of those, or who's at fault, or which circumstances, the integrity of the board comes into greater and greater question. It is not worth the few moments you save of your time to cut corners and jeopardize the integrity of the community's representation. Your students deserve a board that says what it does and does what it says. Through every single moment of this process, be that board.
again, that this is the board's process. You all are having an opportunity now, as a newly configured board, to not only go out and hear from the community, but you're also allowing the community to see that you all are committed and dedicated to the work that you're bringing before them. So, as we were talking earlier about the items that we, that we have in the script, once, once the board agrees to it, then I want to make sure that everyone is clear that, to the greatest extent possible, we want to follow the script as is, so that everybody is saying the same thing, and is collecting the same information. Anyone have any questions or concerns about that? Okay. Then, in the, in the next session, is just, it's an opening. Of course, as you all mentioned earlier, the intent is for board members to go out in pairs, and while I was dealing with some technical issues, I just wanted to go back and emphasize something that was said earlier, that as a, as a board, you all represent all, all the students. You represent all the schools. So whether you're elected from a district, whether you are elected at large, you have the opportunity and the responsibility to hear from all your stakeholders, so you can bring that feedback to the board as a whole, as you consider any modifications and changes that you may make to the goals and guardrails based upon the feedback that you, that you've heard. So the script gives an opportunity for board members to explain why you're there, why you're conducting these sessions. It provides for a brief overview of, of the district. And what I attempted to do, in borrowing some of that language about the demographics of your school district, what I heard over the last month, listening to you all, that it is very important to you, that all members of the community have the opportunity to be heard and, and engaged. And I think this is an opportunity for you to reinforce that and reemphasize that. Following on with the script, this moving forward, talking about the division of values, what's, what's the importance of it? And what, what guardrails are, non-negotiable values are, and policies. You all have three, three, three goals that you've established, and you're having some, during this process, if you receive questions from the community that are dealing with operational issues, or superintendent issues, then you'll be able to explain to the, to the community that you're not there for that purpose. However, you will note concerns that are raised, and then pass them on to the superintendent or superintendent designated, whatever your, your process is. You are not there to engage in concerns and complaints and recommendations that may come to you from an operational standpoint, but you are there to listen for what it is that the community wants students to know, and what it is they want students to be able to do. And then, as I already mentioned earlier-
Rodney-
Yes?
Before you move past that, I, I think, kind of, best practice in how to handle, if we get feedback about, truly, what is it that we want our students to know and be able to do, that is appropriate for the feedback that we're looking for, but in the event that a parent or participant brings us something that is outside of the realm of what students know and are able to do, what is your recommendation for that? Do we put it into the data and decipher through who gets the information later? Do we have a parking lot for that? Do we, do we respond and say, we will get that to the appropriate individual on the superintendent's team? We won't, we won't take note of that here for the what students know and are able to do, but we will get that to the superintendent? Or what, what would you recommend for that?
Yeah, I think the parking lot, or having a sheet there where you can document those concerns, allowing the community to see that you are hearing what they said, but that at the same time, you are going to pass that on to the superintendent or the superintendent designated for, for action.
We can make sure that we have, ah, sorry Rodney, I was just gonna say, we can make sure that in our box, like we had last time, we'll just have a sheet specifically for information to pass to the superintendent, just to make it easier.
And, and if there's anything to practice, and you all are seasoned elected officials, you have appeared before many community meetings, where you've been asked questions, and have had to be on the spot and be able to handle things cordially and politely. And so I would encourage, as, as you all were doing earlier with your, with your role play, take some time to role-play that one, when someone is insistent on speaking to an operational matter, or not addressing the, the questions that are, that are being asked, how you will handle that cordially and politely, and keep the meeting moving forward.
Thank you.
Rodney, Rodney, it's Maria. Just a quick question. So I'm thinking, I'm thinking of an actual session where a parent might need clarification on our question. So, even though it might be, or it might seem very simple, if someone asks, "What do you mean, what should students be able to know and be able to do?", should we perhaps have a different way of restating that question? Or just a different way of asking, so it's more understandable to them?
Let me, let me go to a light rod and see if, Cindy, you're there? Do you want to offer some input on that one?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I think that if, if they need some clarification on what the question means, that is totally fine, and I think that, because you want them to know what the question means in order to answer it. So, if they don't know, you use the example, "What do you mean, what, what should they know and be able to do?" Well, once they leave, in elementary school, what is the knowledge you want them to have? What, what are the skills you want them to have? Some other similar verbiage, and I think you could also decide on that now, kind of what, what some agreed-upon other ways of defining that still mean the same thing could be.
So, two things to that question. Could we, in our invitation to the community to come to these sessions, give an example of what we're after? So we are going to be asking questions like, "What do you think students should know when they leave elementary school?" We are looking for X and O, so that when they come to the meeting, they might have a chance to know, or have formulated their answers already. And then the second one might be, if we still get a question like that, can we all agree on an example of, an example of this might be that a student leaving elementary school can read a book of more than 300 pages, and understand the content, and be able to tell you what the story's about, you know, whatever it is.
Yeah, I think it's important to not give, give the community examples outside of, I, I would feel compelled to say, when we did this in 2019, our community wanted our students to, to know and be able to do this, and refer back to our current goals and guardrails. But I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable giving them arbitrary examples.
How are they supposed to know, otherwise? How is a, how is a citizen supposed to know what a student is supposed to know, and be able to articulate that in a way? I, I, I don't understand how it is, I mean, I have a college degree, and I'm not sure I could articulate it. If you asked me, if I showed up, and you asked me to do it that night, I'm not sure I could do that. And so I, I'm after, what I'm after is trying to get some success for our citizens who show up to do this.
I think, I just, there, it's on, it was on the website last time. So, I will say, there are a couple of, when I looked back at how they outlined what was done in 2019, they listed a couple of questions that I think prompted people to be able to think ahead of time. So, Patrick, I think that's something that we could also consider, which is that people can go to the website, and they can see the general topical issues that are going to be addressed. So for people that like to process ahead of time, that might be the way that we move past that potential barrier.
Yeah. My, my experience, my, if I may, my, my experience is that community members don't have the challenge with expressing what it is that they want for their students and want for their children. One of the things, Mr. Dick, that you said, that the question was, "What is it they're supposed to know?", that's, that's not what the question is. The question is, what is it that the community feels that they, that they should know? And so, I'm not running to a, a challenge where someone wasn't able to articulate that in whatever fashion that they felt was appropriate, but I do think it's good to be prepared. What I would not recommend is to go back and rewrite the landing page, and rewrite the script, so that now you are nudging people in a, in a particular direction. I, I think you'll find that they'll be more than happy, and more than able to express what it is that they want children to know, and what they believe students should be able to do.
So we have about five more minutes on the script. So, I just want to make sure we stay completely focused on the script, so we can move on to the next part of the conversation. Rodney, is there anything else that you would like to elevate with regards to the script at this point?
Well, the important pieces, I think we, we've gone over. Moving forward, again, the highlighted pieces are what is spoken, the spoken, the non-highlight is the context. I do have at the closing, an email address I need for you all to make sure that there's appropriate email address for you to receive this information. And the other thing, I just want to go back to, with the script and with these initial listening sessions, I don't, I don't have a good sense of how many people you are expecting may attend these sessions. And so since you're starting off with the, these sessions, one in, one in each, one in each district, with the board hosting the engagement, you may want to be prepared that more than two board members are there present. If you have a large turnout, then it may be an opportunity for two board members to take half a room, and other two board members to take the other half of the room. So I just want you to consider that as you plan your meetings, and look at your RSDPs and responses that come in about these sessions that you're, that you're hosting.
Great, and thank you. And just one process piece, because I, I don't think we've said this out loud, and I think especially for Anna and Patrick, just to say how it worked. Kim referenced that there was a facilitator and a scribe. And so, the scribe's job is to have a laptop with either the document called up, or you don't have to have internet access. But to be able to take notes throughout the conversation, that's the role of the scribe. And then when it's done, pretty quickly thereafter, turn it around and email it back to Rodney, or if you're using a Google Form, which Rodney, what format are you going to use? A Google Form?
Google Form.
Yeah. So you'll just submit it, then, and if you want, I guess you could tell Rodney you submitted it, but that was the process we used last time, and I think it worked pretty slick.
The, the other piece I just wanted to add to that is, I, I strongly recommend that each board member have the opportunity to play both roles. Don't, don't, don't hide the facilitation, don't hide the scribes. Make sure that each of you have the opportunity, to the extent the number of sessions allow it, to, to do, to do both parts.
Great. Any other thoughts on the script?
One question. So, we will be conducting at least one session in Spanish. Are we planning on having this script translated? And whose job would that be?
So I think we need to put the Spanish, Swahili, there's, there's a couple of language-specific questions that have to go to the community engagement subgroup to discuss the translation-
And we'll talk about that there. Okay.
Because we also, in the case of Spanish, I think we have two native speakers. In the case of Swahili, we don't on our board, and so we've got to discuss how we're gonna handle that.
Okay.
But I think the, the, the starting point is to follow the script, to follow the guide as the starting point for whatever language, of course, we facilitated in. Yeah, I think it's important to know that you can have the script and read from it, and you don't have to memorize this, but it is important to be consistent. So, using it as closely as we can in every session, so that community members are hearing the same thing, and hearing the same questions, is important. And I am, would be happy to practice and role-play with anyone if they would like that practice prior to going out. Great. Thanks, Kim. Maria, I think I'm gonna turn it over to you, and you and Rodney, to talk about the, I think, the most important piece, we'd say, which is the feedback that we got from board members about community outreach and community engagement. So, I'll turn it to the two of you.
So I think that we have a really good list. I, I think that we're trying, I know that we are trying to be very ambitious with the timeframe that we're working with, but I, I guess I just want to make sure that we, as a board, it can stay committed to connecting with the people that we suggested on our list. We, we need to be able to set up times. Right now, we have, we have to be able to do four sessions for the districts, the different districts. And so, this is starting next week. So we'll start, do, sorry, I'm just looking at the email that Rosie sent about Molten confirming.
So those are, those are, I think, I think the hope was that you would kind of talk about the in-addition sessions, Maria? So the- Set, set aside from the specific ones that are gonna be-
That are already set up.
In the four districts, yeah. So I think, how are we, so the feedback that everybody put in, how, how are you taking that? And how did you and Rodney talk about consolidating that information into themes?
So when Rodney, Rodney, you and I talked, are you there? Can you hear me?
I think you're on mute.
Yes, I'm here. I can hear you. Yes.
Okay. I guess I, when, when Rodney and I talked, we discussed mostly the script, and focused on making sure that we had something that the board would be comfortable utilizing in our sessions, not so much how we would work with that information, because I, the information that people provided, because I think that we were going to go about it in the same manner that we did our superintendent's search. Rodney, do-
Yeah, my, my, you said that correctly. My, my intent for tonight was to make sure that each board member has had an opportunity to review what's been, been submitted. And as I have listened to you all over the last several weeks, you know your community, I don't, I don't know your community. Are you comfortable and satisfied that the community members and organizations that you have listed is reaching and identifying those that you said you want to make sure that you, that you heard from? So, I believe each of you needs to go through and look at that. The other concern that I had, as I was looking at the items, trying to ensure that all, all the, all the districts are also represented. So when I look at the community outreach tab, you know, I see, you know, two here, three there, four identified, most of them are at- identified. Most of them are at large. So I want to make sure that each of you are comfortable, that you have made sure that your perspective and input on who represents the community, that you have submitted it and that you are comfortable with what's there.
Right. And, you know, I mean, it seemed to me like we wanted to be prepared for the first sessions that we were going to start off with, and for that, we needed to have a script ready to go. So we have more work to do.
With your committee?
With, yes, with our committee, which Jenna and Patrick, thank you for volunteering to serve on the committee. So we'll be figuring out how we gather that information and how we go about setting up times.
Does that sound good with everybody? I think the goal, hopefully, is to try and get a couple in in December still.
Yes. And ultimately, once the board is comfortable that you all have identified the community, I will go through and do any consolidation or themes that need to be made. But right now, I'm still placing that in your hands to make sure that, one, each and every one of you submitted input, and that you are comfortable, that you are headed in the right direction, of trying to make sure that you are representing all portions of the community per the goal that you set forward.
So let's just call the question, has everybody had a chance to look at the list that was provided? Put input if you had ideas. Have we accomplished that piece, so that the committee, Maria, Patrick, and Jenna can take that and look for themes and be prepared to make a recommendation back? You got head nods here. Teri, I'm not sure if you're still on. I know Patrick, I think Patrick nodded.
I am on, and yes, I'm good.
Great. So Rodney, I think with that, the question is, ideally, we would not reconvene in a work session on the 12th. I think that's everybody's ideal. And so Maria, is it possible with the committee that the three of you can put forth recommendations and that some type of assent back to you saying, yes, we think these are the right recommendations, so we could keep things moving forward? I think that would be fine if you're comfortable. How do other people feel about that? The committee looking at the feedback, saying these are the themes that came through, sending it out to the board, the board saying in response, yes, we agree with these, so that the scheduling process can continue. Teri, Patrick, does that work for you?
Works for me.
Yes.
Okay. Maria, how does that feel to you?
It feels good.
I, being that we have quite a bit to accomplish, I would offer that I, I don't know that the committee needs to bring back to me some sort of, or look for our approval. I would be perfectly okay charging the committee with representing the board on that. I don't know how others feel, but I don't want to add another step.
I feel great about it. How do other people feel?
I think our opportunity to provide that, you know, kind of who we wanted to reach is all in that spreadsheet, and you consolidating it, I empower and know that you'll all do a great job.
Yep. So let's just ask people who are not on the committee. Ms. Campos, you're okay with that? Kim, myself. Teri, are you comfortable with that?
I concur.
Great. Good recommendation. Thank you.
I like that, Kim, and thank you. I think it does save us some work, considering what, how ambitious I think we're trying to be. So I will go back and set up a time with Rodney to kind of go over the information, connect with the rest of the committee, and present to everyone kind of what the plan will be. Okay, thank you.
One final comment, I just, I meant to say this at the beginning before the technology went off on me. I appreciate having the opportunity to work with you all in the committee and the work that's being done. And I'm impressed with the commitment and dedication that you all have moving. So I look forward to continuing to be a support to you as you move to the next phase.
Great. Thanks, Rodney. So a couple of things, and actually, whoever just had that document up, that was perfect. I don't know if that was, yeah, okay. So there's really no easy way to think about how to get all these things scheduled. What Rosie and I chose to do was use the format that was used last year, since we're generally familiar with it, with the exception of Ms. Campos and Mr. Dix. But we have a list, and it's on the screen right now, of existing sessions that have been set up. These were ones that I think we all agreed were important to do. These are very focused on community engagement, inviting people to our schools. We picked schools that we hadn't had listening sessions in during the superintendent search. We identified one in each district. In addition, we knew that it was really critical to seek feedback from teachers and staff, and understanding that I think it's a preferred forum when teachers and staff have separate forums than from parents and community members. Not to say they can't attend anything they want, but we did it last time. And so I think if there's consensus, the recommendation is that we would continue to have some teacher-staff-only forums. Is everybody comfortable with that? And we did both virtual and in-person.
I concur with that recommendation. I think it's really important that we sort of single them out, so the messages are not either merged or influenced.
Great. Ms. Marterano?
Yeah, something that I'm just thinking about, based on those superintendent search engagement opportunities, we had a lot of staff members that came to multiple events and shared at multiple events. And I don't know if that had an impact on the data, where we saw a very heavy staff response. So I wonder if when you're talking with Josie about how we're going to be collecting the information, I certainly, I don't want to limit people and their participation, because if they think of something else to add, I want to have that ability. But I don't know, what does everyone else think? I know I saw a lot of the same people attending multiple events. Did you all also experience that?
So I can speak to that, but let me tell you the idea that we had that maybe helps us better understand the audiences. So in conversations with Phil, and then I think there's assent from, you know, consent, whatever, from Josie, is that we can ask a question around the feeder system that they are a part of. We can ask a question about role. So are you a, I think we have like parent-family staff, DMPS staff, community member. I think the outstanding question is whether or not we can ask some optional demographic questions, whether it is about, I think we can decide some of those optional, but ideally, in both the survey and the registration link, we would have that. So I can't speak to whether or not, I didn't have that experience, but I do think we'll at least have a better snapshot of the types of people that are responding to both the survey and coming to the meetings.
Okay.
I'll just say one other thing, too, on the teachers. The additional suggestion, I think, for consideration is that we host a session for DMPS parents, sorry, staff, DMPS staff who are also parents, and have their kids in DMPS. We thought that would be a really interesting session, to hear from those teachers who have chosen to send their families. So those are the, yeah, so those are the three that we have identified, in addition to the four, which are just strictly based on district location. Okay. If we could put back up the calendar, because I do think, so we've got kind of two planes of work, right? We've got Maria and the committee working to really focus on where in the community we want to go and get those types of meetings set up. At the same time, we have, and if you can go to the official schedule, Rosie, that would be great, we have these meetings that we have to confirm, meaning confirm people at, confirm board members at. I think that, just to explain, so when Anna and Patrick, when you're looking at it, Board Member One and Board Member Two are the two confirmed board members. It worked really well to have an alternate. So this way, if somebody gets sick, if somebody can't attend, we've got an alternate ready to step in. And so the goal would be that we would look at this, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but is Board Member One, did we say Board Member One was the facilitator and Board Member Two is the note taker? So that was Rodney's point, which is like, don't sign up all the time for Board Member One. And so we can approach this one of two ways. I can either use the doodle poll information, and we can just slot people in, or people can look at the link tonight and slot themselves in. What do you prefer?
I think last time we slotted ourselves in, but I don't care.
That'd be great, as long as we get it done, you know, in the next 24, 48 hours.
So you have seven?
These are based on our availability, so we know we have board members who can attend, based on the doodle poll. Yes, there's seven.
So I'm trying to do math.
Yeah. Well, and there's going to be so many more.
So everyone needs to sign up for three slots.
Kind of. But I'll also say that it's going to get easier the more you can plan ahead. So for instance, Patrick had a lot of flexibility. Some of you had very little flexibility. I think you may have more flexibility in January, because you'll be able to plan ahead. So I'll just say, yes, everybody try for three, but knowing that if somebody's doing a little bit more. The only other suggestion that I made that I would like to get some feedback on, ideally, we would never have Anna and Patrick together in the beginning, because this is their first time doing listening sessions, and I think they would benefit from having somebody who's done this before. So when you're signing up for things, I think it would be helpful to try and kind of keep Patrick and Anna separate, just for a little bit, until they feel really comfortable with it. Everybody okay with that? Okay.
Can we just sign up on our own then?
Yes. But can we say that everybody signs up in the next 48 hours?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four hours. Rosie's dropping the hammer. And then the last thing I'll say is, the next thing that'll happen is, I'll work with Rosie on, we had a supply box last time, we had name tags, we had some handouts, we had pens and sign-in sheets, and we even thought about snacks and stuff like that. So that'll come next. But I think the goal was accomplished tonight, which was, yes, Jenna.
I was just saying.
Back to the signups, so we've decided we are not going to go in our own district. Is that correct?
I think that is the, that's the recommendation, if at all possible.
So just if you're a district, if you represent a district, don't go on that one.
Yep. Rodney, any final thoughts on all things community engagement?
No, it sounds like you all have a plan of action, and, you know, my reemphasis will just be on, you know, board as a whole, everyone engaged, and go out there and have fun.
Yeah.
Check. Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair, to Mrs. Knox's question, if each board member will have at least three opportunities, is there any value in, I certainly hear how important it is to probably go into districts that are not, meetings in districts that are not your own, but is there any value in maybe at least attending one in district sort of engagement? I don't know.
I mean, personally, I think where the real value of people attending events in their own district may be, is especially as we're digging deeper into communities of trust, like I think it would be really important for me, Maria, to participate, or Anna, in a Spanish-only session. And so that may be in their district. So I guess I think maybe that's what you're talking about, too, Dr. Roberts, is how do we find the line? And Rodney, you know, welcome any feedback on that. But it is, people come to meetings because they also know a board member or feel safe and comfortable. So I think it's a great point.
Yeah, my point was with the initial session that you had, you have seven of them. And then moving forward, you know, you're going to have these other engagements. And so with the initial seven, you may end up seeing that, based upon who's available, you may have to be in your district. But the main point is, is that you make sure that you are seen and heard from the community as a whole, and not just your district. So I would get encouraged if you have the opportunity to get outside your district on these first seven, do that. But if you find that that doesn't work, just agree that, you know, you have to do what you have to do.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so next steps, just to wrap up, Maria and the committee are going to work to develop themes and kind of get us to the next step, which is scheduling those meetings.
By the end of the week.
Okay. You guys are all dropping the hammer here. By the end of the week, that's going to happen. Everybody's going to give feedback in the next 24 hours on the existing sessions and sign up for those, and take a read through the script, I think especially prior to going out and speaking in the community, to make sure that you're comfortable with it. Good?
Good. I just had a quick question. The teachers, family, staff, those, do we already have a location, or is that...
No. So you and I have to figure that piece out. And then the virtual, we need a DMPS link.
Yep. Perfect.
Great. And I think we're going to handle it the way we did it last time with the RSVPs. So that worked really well, I think, so we didn't have the Zoom links out there. People RSVP to get the Zoom link. Good. We move on and try and do committees in 12 minutes or less? How do people feel about that? Yeah? Okay, thank you. All right. Everybody should have a handout, I think, called Board Committee Discussion. Everybody have it, work session, great. So on an annual basis, the charge is that board committees are reviewed. In the handout that I gave you, I cited in Board Governance Manual 4.12, what we actually say about the role of board committees. And I think the most important thing is their role is to strengthen and support the work of the board, not to interfere with delegation from board to the superintendent. If you haven't read through this policy, I'd encourage you to take a few minutes just to read through it, but I think it's very clear. What I thought would be a good conversation for tonight is to talk through history, to talk through some potential recommendations of board committees that maybe we don't necessarily need to have anymore, and then to ask everybody to just think about it, and before the end of break, people express interest in a particular committee. So that is my hope. And then based on that feedback, we will name the committees and then put them on the consent agenda item in the first January meeting. So if it's okay, I thought I would just talk through historically, and Teri, I'm going to ask you to jump in if I don't get everything exactly right. But based on the research that I did, and along with what Rosie shared with me, our committee assignments in the past have been Audit, CLAT, which is the Community Legislative Action Team, the Des Moines School Foundation, DMTRS, Early Childhood Iowa, Head Start, Heartland AEA, Parks and Rec, Superintendent Compensation, and then, yeah, that was the full. And then we also had membership liaisons to Urban Education Network, Iowa Association of School Boards, and Council of Great City Schools. In addition to that, from time to time, we created ad hoc committees. And an example of an ad hoc committee is the Community Engagement Work Group. An example of the ad hoc committee was the example that I shared with you, which was when we created one for the superintendent's evaluation. An ad hoc committee is something that is temporary, it is stood up for a specific purpose, and disbanded when the purpose is complete. So are there any other historical committee participation or committee assignments, Teri, that you would want to call out that didn't get stated?
No, those are the traditional ones that we've used in the past.
Okay, thanks.
Jackie? I would offer that on superintendent compensation, I think we actually have coined that superintendent evaluation and compensation, so that this particular committee... that Superintendent Evaluation and Compensation, so that this particular committee is assigned the responsibility for working with board leadership on the completion of the evaluation tool, and then allowing that to be transitioned to the rest of the board for feedback, and then based on that feedback, if I'm not mistaken, we have utilized that to craft communication to the superintendent with regard to the board's evaluation for the year and recommendation for compensation. So I would probably just add Superintendent Evaluation and Compensation.
That's a great suggestion. So, I think the, a couple things I just wanna share, and Dr. Roberts and I had a chance to talk, and if it's okay, I'm just gonna share some of the information, because one of the questions I had was, is there, are there any laws or rules or bylaws of other organizations that require board members to be on some of these entities? And I think the, the biggest takeaway is that Early Childhood Iowa, Head Start, Heartland AEA, and Parks and Rec are really not mandated. It was based on historical engagement of board members. They are also staffed by DMPS staff people, so in the case of Early Childhood Iowa and Head Start, it is, Kristen?
Yes.
Yep, and then, in the case of Heartland AEA, I think Matt Smith would be the particular representative, and then in the case of Parks and Rec, that would be Matt Smith as well. And so, I guess I wanna just get some feedback on, you know, whether or not the board continues to be interested in wanting to participate in those committees. One of the questions that I asked Dr. Roberts was, is it a sign of disrespect if we don't show up? Do we need to show up because we wanna show that we value the partnership? And I think the staff recommendation is that it is not critical for board members to participate in these committees. So I'd love some feedback on that, because I don't think that is a decision left to one person.
I would say that I, I feel like the participation on many of these committees can, in fact, be reported back by the superintendent, they fall into, to the superintendent work. I don't know that there's value add to the committee or to the board to have us sitting on many of these committees.
Any other feedback on that recommendation? So, I think to state what I think we're saying is, we move away from putting board on these external bodies that we named, Early Childhood Iowa, Head Start, Heartland AEA, Parks and Rec. That doesn't mean that if there's interest by a board committee member, we couldn't speak to Dr. Roberts, and I'm sure the board committee member can check in with the staff to learn about what's happening on that board, but I think as a practice, this may allow us to spend our time as a board differently.
I would even offer CLAT. Amanda sits in on that, as does Dr. Roberts. I don't, I feel like the role of the board in that committee has been simply a liaison. I don't, I don't know that there's, again, been any value add on that one.
I think, I, I think that's not a decision that we should make tonight, in my opinion. I think there's some more conversation that should happen if there's a transition there, just so they all are aware of it, and it's not like we just decided at this table without having that conversation.
And it may be that we...
I would agree.
Go ahead, Teri.
No, I was gonna say, I agree, and I think historically, because we have been involved at the board level at these tables, there needs to be strong communication about us being represented through the staff, and not, and no disrespect to any of those committees, but rather an understanding that our board time can be used a little differently, and that we feel that we've got our bases covered with staff. The only other thing that I would offer is, especially with regard to Head Start and Early Childhood Iowa, I know we get funding from them, and I wanna make sure that, again, if there, if there's a strong desire for the board to be represented at those tables, I think we need to acknowledge that, but if there is really no direct correlation between board involvement at those decision-making tables, then I think we just respectfully decline and indicate that our representative will be X.
Great. So Dr. Roberts, if you would be willing to go back to the staff and make sure that they feel comfortable in the recommendation that the board not participate, especially in the Head Start and Early Childhood Iowa, and then we can think through any other way to communicate that, so they feel respected, and that, that Kristen's work feels empowered.
Sure.
Great.
Yep, sorry, Ms. Roberts.
Okay, so then I think the only other question is, there has been some discussion with Dr. Roberts about maybe adding to board members to certain bodies of work that are happening in the district that are really front and center for the board and the district. One of them in particular is the FMB, the Facilities Master Plan, and then the second one was the Budget, specifically, Dr. Roberts, the Budget Negotiations Committee. So, one of the potential recommendations that I'd love to get feedback from board members on, is whether or not the board would be interested, we're not putting people on it and naming people at this point, but the recommendation is that we would add somebody, a board member, to serve as a liaison to the Facilities Master Plan and Committee, and to the Budget Negotiations Committee.
What's the Budget Negotiations Committee? I'm not familiar with that.
Dr. Roberts, do you wanna speak to that?
That's the DMEA, School District Negotiations.
Oh, you mean the union negotiations?
Yes, the union negotiation.
Yeah, I, for the, the same reason, I think, as the other four that we discussed, that's very much superintendent work. I'm, I enjoy receiving an update in our weekly updates regarding those items, and a cadence of update, but I don't, I don't think that that's the right place for the board.
Other comments?
I would, I would concur, especially in the negotiations. I think it potentially could compromise the integrity of an individual board member in weighing in on the ultimate decisions that have to be made from a board perspective regarding percentage increases for compensation and salary. And I think it also maybe sends out a message that board members can somehow be lobbied, if you will. So I would offer that especially on the negotiations, that I don't believe that that's a place where a board seat makes, makes, makes good sense in terms of how we need to function when it comes to the final decision-making.
I'd love to hear from other board members as well.
So I guess my only challenge with both of those committees and thinking about board, at least having a finger on the pulse of what's going on, is that there are two huge issues that are facing our district right now. I mean, the Facilities Committee is essentially the future of our buildings and budget, and I think for us not to have any role when it comes to representation in our community and understanding the, the direction, the one thing I despise about our budget process is it always feels like we get to the very end, and it's March, and we're presented with a budget, and it's basically like we have to approve it, because there's no time to go back. And I think that's what I don't wanna have happen with the Facility Committee, is that, you know, I think, I think we need to have a really strong finger on the pulse and understanding what's going on. And then I guess my only feedback on the Compensation Committee, which I know I, I did not realize, you know, that we, I know that we give the authority to the superintendent to negotiate on our behalf, but I, I just, there's a part of me that feels like, how, how do our, how do our staff members have a voice then? If they, they come and present to us about these disparities that exist in the hard work that they do, and how we can't be an advocate for them at all, or they have no ability to sway the conversation, because I, I just feel like we owe it to them and to understand sort of the whole picture from an open perspective. That's, that's my two cents. As a board member sitting here for two years, it feels like that we, I don't really know the ins and outs and decisions of why. So while I firmly agree that we need to support our staff member, you know, our superintendent, we also are representing voices in our community, and, and sometimes I don't feel like we do that to the best of our ability.
And Ms. Knox, just to be clear, you were talking about the Budget Negotiations Committee. You said compensation, I just wanted to make sure you were talking about that.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks. Other board members?
Um, so I, I believe that there are some committees that definitely, I think are okay for us to kinda get away from, but personally, I feel like the more present I am, and the more visible I am, the better I can represent. So similar to what, you know, to what you're saying, I, I think that it's, I like the, the term, keeping the pulse, because I, you know, when people approach you, I, when people approach me, I wanna be able to know what's going on and be prepared, and I think that what makes me a good board member is really to know what's going on. And while we might not know everything, and we don't have to know everything, there are things that we have to be able to understand and stay on top of. So, I don't know, I mean, as a board, whatever we decide to do, i- it's okay, but I think there are some places that we do need to be, where we do need to be.
Can I offer just a, a real quick thought? And maybe this is more a matter of process as opposed to participation? So, it feels like what I hear people saying is that we don't know what's going on at the negotiating table. We're not aware of what is being discussed. We don't feel informed, so that when we get questions, we can respond. I'm gonna say two things in that regard. Number one, it's not our position to respond as individual board members, if you are seated at a table where you're identified as a representative of the board to negotiations. Those are behind closed doors, and those are considered exempt sessions, if I'm not mistaken. So I think we have to be careful about information received and information shared. I also feel like another way to skin the cat on this one would be to ask the superintendent for weekly and/or bi-weekly briefings from the negotiating team, to get us up to speed on where they are, so that we are in the know about what's going on. We do have an opportunity to provide feedback from the board perspective, but we're also not putting ourselves in a position where individually or collectively, we are being compromised as a board in terms of the negotiating process.
Thanks, Teri. Ms. Dick, Mr. Dix, Ms. Campos, I don't wanna put you on the spot, and I think this, we're just trying to get some feedback from people on these topics. Is there anything either of you wanna say?
Jackie.
Yeah?
Jackie, I'll go ahead.
Okay.
So, I, I get, I hear what Teri is saying, and I agree about the Budget Committee, and about the idea of a particular board member being compromised, or the appearance of any kind of impropriety there. I would ask the question, is there a way for a board member to be an observer in those negotiations without being a participant? You know, I mean, I, I do see the value of having a board member who has the perspective of a representative official coming back to board colleagues with their perspective about that, about being in that room. And so I, I'm torn about that one, Teri, because I agree with you, and I, I really do see your point, and I think that's important. So, I, I'm the, so, full stop there. On the Facilities Committee, I would like to see board representation there. I have a, a concern over whether there will be a, enough creativity presented and solutions explored in a really challenging, and potentially really challenging situation. And I think most importantly, this board would come to that work with the perspective of student outcomes, not buildings, or, you know, facilities, or how do we get these people in this? We can come back to it and say, how is that going to impact student outcomes? And, and really keeping that front and center in, in that work. And so I, I think it would be important to have a board member involved in that, in that work.
I think, I wanna be mindful of time. I think our goal was to surface the committee conversation. I guess I wanna ask one other question, which is separate from the two that we just elevated. Are there any ad hoc committees or any issues that we would like to lean in as a board and discuss, whether or not there is interest or energy, or, I know I've heard a little bit about whether or not we wanna think about a marketing committee, or other ways to, you know, encourage the board to be out in the community, and we can table that for another time. But I just wanna lift up, I don't think, I think, to Teri's point, the Superintendent Compensation and Evaluation is something that we know is forthcoming in March. Are there any other emerging issues that we should be aware of, which would require any type of ad hoc committee at this point? Ms. Campos?
I just, I agree with Jenna and Maria. We need to be present, especially on the facilities, a lot of that's gonna come up soon, and that will probably help with the budget, that we are kinda aware of what's going on in there. That's kinda my opinion, I think we need to be present, and now, and let the people know that we're there to listen.
I think it was...
Just as a point of reference, when we had the previous Facilities Advisory Committee that Maria co-chaired with Jeff Russell, we did have a couple of board liaisons that were assigned to monitor those meetings, but really didn't have a definitive role in terms of, you know, decision-making, because individuals can't speak on behalf of the full board. So I think if the desire is for us to have a presence, we can identify a liaison, but it would be in name only and not in representation and/or voting.
And I would offer that, when we received an update in a work session from Matt and his team, I believe that he outlined very specific dates of engagement and dates for updates to the entire board, which I think is an appropriate way to receive that information. And I would offer to my board colleagues that, that as we go out into the community to listen to the vision and values, which we as board members collectively have not done, I think that is our opportunity to really identify what it is that our community wants of us moving forward, and that potentially we should table making decisions until we really collect that data from our community as a whole.
Great. I think it was really great that Dr. Roberts was here to listen and take this in as well. So, I think with that, what I would ask is, if people are interested in serving on particular committees or being the liaison to particular educational associations, please let me know. On December 14th, we are going to have the Council of Great City Schools do a 15-minute presentation on kind of the different services that they offer, which I think will be really helpful. Also, I was... Also, Iowa Association of School Boards will do that for 15 minutes. I'm not sure we've got UEN signed up, but I know that our newer board members are meeting with Margaret to talk about Finance 101. And so along those lines, I think, do we all feel comfortable taking away the work session on the 12th that was on hold on people's calendar?
What were we doing in that work? Was that for...
If we didn't get this, if we didn't get community engagement done, which I think we all feel done. Okay, great. And so our next time together is the retreat. It is on the 14th, it begins at Fleur? It is going to take place at the Fleur location, and we are continuing to put the agenda together. I know I foreshadowed it for some of you. There will be a significant investment of time in relationship building. It's something I think, I know I'm really excited about, I think Dr. Roberts is as well, in addition to addressing some things that are really important, like reviewing our Board Governance Manual and a couple of other topics that we think will be important to cover. Everybody good for the night? Any final thoughts, Teri or Patrick?
No, thank you.
No, I'm good.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks so much, thanks for spending the time, really appreciate it.